Very proud to be part of the organization that's bringing it. But what is workforce housing in that development? It's 30, 40, 60, and 80% of median income. Now, I also chair the continuum of care which is required by HUD in order to bring housing, federal housing money into the community. And HUD does a remarkable effort to identify the cost of housing in every community. In the last two years, while fair market rent, which is HUD's estimation, generally goes up in communities by 2 or 3%, in our community, it's gone up by 10 and 14%, which means that rental housing is up by 24% in two years. I can tell you, because I study it every day, there is no affordable housing at the fair market rent, which is $400 less per month for a studio apartment than you're proposing for employment.
30 seconds.
You should note that we have many people who are working and are homeless. I ask you to use fair market rent, which is a legitimate study of the housing in our community, to set your goals, both for employed and for people that are not employed. There isn't a chance that the housing that you're proposing will be available to the people...
Thank you, your time is up.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Michael.
Next speaker.
Erica Middleton.
Good evening, so grateful to be here. My name is Erica Middleton. I'm at 169 Hunter Street in Kingston. I'm a homeowner. I'm here to support the resolution to lower the AMI down to 50% and 80% of AMI. We live in a city that is rich in its history of supporting all kinds of people living here. And what we know, even the Government Accountability Office, which is part of the US government, shares that for every hundred dollars rent goes up, we get a 9% increase in homelessness. So what kind of city would we be if we did not actually develop and sustain affordable housing? And right now, it's clearly not affordable. You can see the increase in homelessness. You can see double-ups increasing, housing stock just being degraded, and people's dignity being degraded. We can see elders on my own street struggling. And what happens when somebody wants to sell their home and move into a smaller place? There's no place for anyone to move. I'll just also say that people have a fantasy that if we let developers into our community and build all these big buildings and do fake affordable housing, somehow it'll make our community a better place to live and we can attract new businesses. But our accountability is really to the people who've lived in Kingston and the people who are moving to Kingston, who see it as a place for, a better place for their community and for their families. And so I absolutely support this resolution. I think it's brave, but I also think it's needed. We do not want to become Hudson. We do not want to become a suburb of New York City. We want to keep our character. We want to keep our community. We want to make sure the diversity of our community, including folks of color and elders, can stay here. And so every time our homelessness goes up, our double-ups go up, and our affordable housing is just dwindled and dwindled and dwindled. We know that that dignity is lost. And so I just very much appreciate the time and thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Carrie Downey. Good evening. I'm Carrie Downey. I'm at 169 Hunter Street in Kingston, New York, 12401. And I am absolutely here to support the resolution to amend the affordability range from 80% and 120% of AMI to 50% and 80% of AMI. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Greg McCullough.
Good evening. Greg McCullough, 14 Van Buren Street. I'm always happy to come and speak on items that will better people's lives. But on the other hand, I'm very, very, very disappointed that I have to come and speak on the same topic once again. I don't see why this should not have made it to the point where it needs to be. Folks are struggling, especially with housing. We need to do better and we need to get this done so that we can make the lives of the residents that are renting better. It's a step in the right direction. But also, once this is done, we need to take a look at those that will not be impacted by this and we need to do something for those folks as well. Affordable housing should be affordable across the board. I'm just so disappointed. I don't even know what to say. I hope this makes it through. I support this 100%. Please let me know if there's anything I can do or whatever you need me to do to help support this, get it through. Let me know. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. The last name looks like Edwards.
Good afternoon. My name is Melvin Edwards.
Can you speak closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Melvin Edwards. I live at 205 Early Avenue apartment, 3 Allen, Stone Run. And I'm a senior citizen. I'm retired for 15 years now. I'm a renter. Got all the old foot to pay the rent and the sea and the water coming in the ceiling and the body fix it. Called him all the while. Took it on three months about now, three months now, the water still coming down here the same way. And the first call, I spoke to him, but the body come and got it all now. So I don't know what to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Shay Kessler. Good evening. Thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak. My name is Mr. Shay Kessler. I live at eighty-seven B Fairmont Avenue in Kingston. And I'm here to urge for the zoning board, for the zoning, to address the housing crisis that we are experiencing in Kingston and to move our affordable housing to fifty and eighty percent. And I want to start by telling a story. I have a client of mine, and I'm going to name her Jane Doe. Jane Doe is a mother of four children. Two of them are autistic and have high needs. And Jane Doe also had to take her children at the end of the night and escape her domestic violence situation. Jane Doe now receives supportive housing. However, what has been holding her back is affordable housing because she is trying to pick herself back up and, you know, give her children a better life moving forward. Stories like Jane Doe happen all over Ulster County. And by lowering on the average AMI income for renters in Kingston will allow her to have a fighting chance to be able to have a sustainable future moving forward. I also happen to be a graduate student and I am working full-time. And even rent to this day is unaffordable for myself. New York's average percentile for income, about sixty percent of New Yorkers make more than forty-six K a year. And Kingston, on average, the renters' income has an average of forty-six K a year. And fifty-two percent of Kingstonians are renters. So I support the resolution to make housing more affordable for everybody in Kingston so that way people like Jane Doe can be supported in their overall goals and be able to have a sustainable life moving forward. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bartek Stardej.
Good evening and thank you for this opportunity for comment. My name is Bartek Stardej. I'm the Director of Housing Initiatives for the City of Kingston. I'm also a resident at three-five-four South Wall Street. I strongly agree with the idea that we need more affordable housing and more deeply affordable housing. But this debate should focus on the merits of the idea on hand. Will changing the definition of affordable in our zoning code actually lead to the creation of those units? Evidence which suggests that answer is no. Under the inclusionary zoning requirements in our zoning code, any new development with seven or more units must include ten percent affordable housing at eighty percent of the area median income. We are among a handful of jurisdictions in the county that has these requirements. None of our peer cities in the Hudson Valley, including Poughkeepsie, Newburgh, and Hudson, have any citywide affordability requirements whatsoever. It is a fair question to therefore ask why Kingston is being singled out in this debate. The only way affordable units are produced under inclusionary zoning is if there is a lot of market rate housing being produced. And if we set the affordability level such that new market rate projects are not financially feasible, we won't get any new housing, market rate or affordable. So far this year, the city has created on paper two affordable housing units under the zoning code requirements. Do we think that this is meeting the housing needs of our community? If we make that affordable requirement even stronger, do we believe that we will produce more affordable units? I question whether new housing projects will be financially feasible with the new requirements. In two thousand and twenty-three, the City of Albany lowered its affordability definition from one hundred percent to sixty percent AMI. What has happened since? In my conversations with Albany officials, new multifamily housing applications have virtually stopped, even though they have continued in the surrounding jurisdictions. The only projects that are being proposed are those that are able to access scarce and competitive public funding. But the worst part of this, I'm told, is that the debate has served as a distraction for what the kinds of solutions that are actually needed to support housing development. If this was a serious proposal, it would be backed by resources actually needed to create the level of affordability envisioned and strong evidence that new housing projects would still be financially feasible under the new requirements, and I would strongly support it. But as it stands, this amendment would only seriously undermine the city's housing goals and the rest of our zoning code. I urge the Laws and Rules Committee to vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jenna Goldstein.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay? Great. My name is Jenna Goldstein. I live in Ward Three. And I'm the community organizer for Ulster County at For the Many. Thanks for hearing us out tonight. I'm here to speak in favor of lowering the AMI to fifty and eighty at the highest because you don't have enough affordable housing as it is. But prioritizing developers initiatives over the constituents seems really out of line for elected officials to do. I disagree that this will not encourage more building because Kingston, unlike Albany, is a very hot place to move to. So I think that people will still want to build here, even if the affordability measurements for one of every ten units, which is barely anything at all, was raised, was lowered to be actually affordable for everyday people. As it stands now, the current affordability code, twenty-three hundred dollars for studio apartment, that's robbery and it's untenable to expect tenants to actually pay that. If we want to have people working at our stores and working in our restaurants and in our community to stay diverse, we have to have a diverse housing stock. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker, please.
Rose Quinn.
Hello. My name is Rose Quinn. I live on Downstreet in Kingston. I'm here to speak very strongly in favor of lowering the AMI to fifty and eighty percent. Having housing that is available and affordable to people who are on, you know, I don't even, we tend to look at this argument as if we're either providing charity or we're providing luxury housing. But really, in the middle is this huge group of people, such as myself, who are not going to ever come close to what the higher thresholds are for housing, but still want a need to stay in place in where they're living. People like me often are the people who are doing a lot of your community work. So I, for example, have done things like organizing the Kingston Bike Festival. And I sit on the Ulster County Traffic Safety Board. And I also, you know, I was president of Bike Friendly Kingston. I've come to this common council many times. And part of the reason why I can do that is I'm working at a job. I don't have to work six jobs in order to live here, okay? So I actually have the time to invest back into my community. I've also invested back in my community by providing my community with my daughter, who is now paying taxes as a single mom coming into this community. If I was expected to come into this community as an entry-level civil servant, I never would have been able to come here. And my daughter, who now lives and pays taxes here, wouldn't be doing that either. You know, so you're investing in the backbone of your community by making housing affordable. I highly reject the argument also that if we, you know, create affordable housing, that that is somehow going to dissuade people from coming and investing. I think what you're going to see is it's going to dissuade unscrupulous investors. Okay, so what you see, for example, happening in places like Sagerties, where there are no, virtually no regulations in place, you're seeing all sorts of kind of Wild West development happening. And we don't want that to happen in Kingston. Like, who needs that?
Thirty seconds.
You know, we need to invest in our community and keep people safe within their community and, you know, provide housing for a class of people that are providing a hell of a lot for this community. So we would appreciate it if you'd look out for us. So thank you very much. Keep housing affordable in Kingston. It's really, really important. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Jaclyn Nash.
Hi, I'm, excuse me, Jaclyn Nash. I live at thirty-four Grand View. I've been a part of this community for fifteen years. I've been a homeowner since 2015. I prepared a statement, but a lot of what I prepared has already been said today. In the past few years, we've really seen a lot of changes in Kingston and I'm really, and I'm proud and really amazed by the developments. But what's happening here with the affordable housing really needs to be addressed. I am for the proposition, or I'm sorry, the resolution. And we need to be lowering these numbers to, you know, because we have to take care of the backbone of our community. I've watched friends in Kingston leave Kingston. These are nurses, nannies, teachers, small business owners who have not been able to stay in this community because they cannot find affordable housing. And I share these as reflections of what's happening all over the city. We're talking about teachers, police officers, waitresses, nurses. These are people who make, you know, I didn't know that the average, you know, income was forty-six thousand. All of these people who are the backbone of our community, they have salaries that start below sixty thousand a year. I talked to a gentleman the other day who said, oh, my daughter is a teacher in Kingston. She's been here for, she's been teaching in Kingston for three years. I said, oh, does she live here, knowing that I was coming here? And he said, I didn't feed him any information. He said, no, she can't afford to live in Kingston. So we are asking these people to serve our community. But with these numbers, we're saying you can serve our community, but you cannot afford to live here. We don't want you to actually live here. There are studies that have shown that increasing the number of luxury or market rate housing options don't necessarily bring down housing costs. I know that that is one of the reasons for having this high, these high rents and attracting developers. But these don't bring down housing costs. And also policies, like NIMBY policies, can really only deepen the crisis of affordable housing. So I think as a community and those who are elected officials who are voting on this really need to ask yourselves, who do we want Kingston to be for? Do we want it to be a place where only the wealthy can thrive? Or a place where everybody can continue to work, live, and build their lives? And so I urge you to consider the voices of the people here and the people who support policies that truly serve everyone in the community, the old and the new, longtime residents and newcomers. Thank you very much for your consideration. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lisa Royer.
Good evening. Thank you for creating this opportunity for us to speak. My name is Lisa Royer and I am currently unhoused. So I don't have an address to give you. I'm sleeping on many couches in Kingston, New York, right now of friends who are giving me places to stay while I look for affordable housing, even though I have, I make a living wage at my job. My job is co-founder of Rise Up Kingston. And at my job, we do community outreach to many of the hotels where hundreds of our community members are placed with their families in one room, living, cooking for their families in just a microwave for months, sometimes years at a time. This is the real housing crisis. There isn't public transportation to get these families to the, every two-week appointments that they have to make at DSS to keep them housed in these hotels with terrible conditions such as roaches and, like I said, the microwave and the small refrigerator that's about this big to feed their families, sometimes five children at a time. I, my former address in Kingston was fifty-eight Fair Street. It's still empty. Two years later, after I was pushed out by gentrification, I was paying nine hundred and fifty dollars a month for a one-bedroom. An LLC bought my building about six months after I moved in. There were seven apartments in the building. This LLC said that everyone in the building owed five thousand dollars above in arrears, and, which was a lie. They offered us each five thousand dollars to leave this building. I wouldn't offer someone five thousand dollars that owed me five thousand dollars, but that's what they did. Some of us refused the money. Some of us took it because we were desperate and knew that we were going to get kicked out. I didn't take the money. I tried to fight it and I was pushed out. That building is still empty, like I said, to this day, two years later. Like, I cry every time I ride past there because I don't have a place to live and it's still empty with the blinds downstairs from the woman who was an elder in our, who is an elder in our community, who lived there seventeen years, who was also pushed out. And they said that she owed the five thousand dollars after.
Thank you.
My time is up? I didn't get a warning, did I?
Yes, you did.
Oh, I apologize. Thank you for hearing us.
Thank you, Lisa. Next speaker, please.
Pat Pelicano.
Hello. Thank you. My name's Pat Pelicano. I'm at one-twenty-six Pearl Street. I was formerly at Forty-three St. James for five years before my landlord sold my house from underneath me. My roommate living there was there for seven years. I just want to bring those examples to light because as long as housing is for profit, we're going to have a problem. I appreciate this amendment, or whatever, but it's a drop in the bucket. There's other issues that are compounding, housing inaccessibility. I drove by People's Place today and the line was around the block at two different times throughout the day. People are food insecure. Healthcare is a joke. And so when you add to that housing insecurity, these issues compound. I also mostly just wanted to echo what Lisa was saying. I also do meal drop offs at the Kingston Motel, where there's now a free fridge. A free fridge is a resource that community members can get food whenever for free because we have abundant food resources. And yet people are still starving or people are not getting the nutrition that they need and that is around. But if you have conversations with the people up there, as Lisa was pointing out, these are people that work in Kingston, but they don't have cars. Or they have family members that go to the high school or they go to the middle school. And they live there in a place that's not built for, like, to house people all year long. I also work with young people who go to school, who also have experienced being evicted. And yeah, so I encourage you to get imaginative. This is a good example, like fifty and eighty, that's great for the percentage. Why not go lower? Who cares? In addition to, like, the amount of abandoned buildings that are around, you know, that have the big red Xs on them, I mean, some of those aren't sure condemnable or whatever. But, you know, once again, as Lisa's pointing out, there are so many of these buildings in Kingston that sit empty. So maybe we can do something about getting people into there instead of building, you know, new development that is still inaccessible, still is going to require
Thirty seconds.
resources that destroy the planet. You know, now we know about the effects of industrialization. And if we see it even on certain scales, even in small Kingston, it has a compounding effect. So yeah, I would encourage you to get imaginative. So yeah, I would encourage you to get imaginative. Appreciate the drop in the bucket, but there are many, many systems at hand that need a hammer. Thanks.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lindsay Duval.
Good evening. My name is Lindsay Duval. I'm a homeowner who lives at 12 Klingberg Avenue in Ward 5, and I've been in Kingston for over 11 years. I'm speaking on behalf of myself as a resident and neighbor, but also note that I've worked in the affordable housing field for the past 11 years, and specifically now work in advocacy for the lowest-income people. So this is an issue that's very near and dear to my heart and that I work on every day. And I think this is a really healthy conversation for our city to have right now. I want to thank the tenants and Lisa, who is unhoused, for being here to speak up about their experiences. And I want to be sure everyone understands that this is a national problem faced by every community across the country. It's a systemic failure, and it has been in the making for decades. Again, I'm really glad we're here as a community to talk about solutions. While it's tempting to change the zoning code to redefine affordability in Kingston, I don't believe that this is actually going to lead to much, if any, of an impact. This definition only applies to a handful of new homes created each year through the city's inclusionary zoning policy. And in the past year, it would only have applied to two units. However, there are many ways that the city and we as concerned residents can and must support the creation of more deeply affordable rental homes. First, we can all show up at planning board meetings and other public hearings to support larger development projects that could provide more affordable homes, those with deeper affordability, including supportive housing developments for people who have experienced homelessness. These projects are funded with federal, state, and sometimes local subsidies to ensure that they can be rented at rates affordable to very low and extremely low-income households. We need to support projects like this in every neighborhood in our community. Second, we should target any existing city incentives for developers, such as awarding pilots, to projects that maintain deeper affordability levels. We can advocate for this and speak up as projects are being considered for new pilots. While the City of Kingston doesn't have its own funds to subsidize affordable housing, it's exploring the creation of a mixed-income housing development model that could lead to the creation of more deeply affordable homes. We can support innovative models like this and weigh in about what kind of housing developments should be prioritized to receive the subsidy. We can also explore other ways to, to generate funds for a local housing trust fund, such as an increased fee for short-term rentals, a vacancy tax, or a real estate transfer tax on higher-value properties. Ulster County does have a housing trust fund with a dedicated funding source of $15 million each year, and we can advocate that they change their definition of affordability, which is currently at 80% or below of the area median income. The bottom line is that the private market cannot build and operate homes affordable to lower-income people.
Thank you. If you have more, you can send it in to the clerk or get, or hand it in. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Bill Erner.
Good evening. Can you hear me? Okay. I live at 109 Washington Avenue, Washington, having been a slaver colonizer, and we have know some of the history of that street and the Menosync Trail. I would urge the common council to research that and consider renaming it or adding an additional name. Thank you. Now, as to the matter at hand here. We heard from Lisa about 58 Fair Street, and I just want to finish what she was saying about some of the tenants there. This was an ETPA building, and I'm aware of at least four families that lost their housing after it came under rent control. You can look in the records of City Housing Court for some of them who had cases there even. So what is that all about? Common council, you should be investigating what happened there and talking to the Rent Guidelines Board, and they should be talking to the state. Next. We've heard about social services issues, and please come and talk to me. I had a lot of experience navigating that in the county legislature. At the time, a year ago, when I left, 50% of DSS unhoused in Ulster County came from the City of Kingston, which only has 15% of the county's population. In terms of adding resources, whatever the city can't add, we should be asking the county, the state, the feds to add these funds. Look at what we're spending money on: genocide, 800 military bases overseas. Tell the government we're fed up with that. I appreciate the ceasefire resolution. Get back to them. Get to the state. The state is also supporting this nonsense, this criminal nonsense. The trust fund that's $15 million on the county level is not going to be distributed all at once, but there is an opportunity, among other things, where tenants could apply for funds to purchase their home from their landlord who, if they were willing to sell. That, too, is a half-measure, but it's a step toward housing justice. When I was in the legislature, I supported subsidies to landlords as an attempt to keep low-income and low-wealth tenants properly housed with some dignity. But that's a tired and colonized way of doing it. If, you know, this city exists on stolen land, it's a settler colonial state, and it's disrespectful of the earth and the land on which the city is built to continue to permit private profit to be extracted from the land. Under the monopoly racial capitalist regime that represents the United States, houselessness, evictions, unaffordable housing are features, not bugs. So I urge you to reduce the limits for the 10% of housing required to be affordable for new developments. If nothing gets built, then we need to get the lands into hands of those who will respect the land, the earth, and the people here, the human and the more-than-human. How about transferring it into the hands of those residents who actually need the housing? Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Richard Ralph.
Good evening. Thank you for offering me the opportunity. I grew, my name's Richard Ralph. I live at 174 West Chestnut Street. I grew up in Kingston. I'm 70 years old and until, uh, July of 2020, I was working at, here in the county. I live on a fixed income. I have Social Security. I do have a pension, which I am going through faster than I want to. And my partner is also on a pension and fix, and on a fixed income. I pay $1,550 a month, which is, I don't know what percentage, but it's higher than the listed percentage on the, on the talking points that were put up earlier. It makes it very hard to do anything else but work toward making sure that you've got your rent covered every month with the rents as high as they are. And it's difficult for us to do anything other than keep our eye on how much money we're making and how much money we're not spending here in Kingston. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Maria Rhodes. Maria Rhodes.
Next speaker, please.
DeeDee Prescott.
Hello, and thank you for having us here today. I didn't really prepare anything, but I, first of all, I live at 121 Clinton Ave. I've only been here for the past year, but in the Hudson Valley for the past four years or so. But I've also have been working in the nonprofit mental health sector for the past two years. And what I've seen is just so disturbing and... Try not to cry because I, every day, I hear stories like Lisa, day in, day out. And it's really disheartening for me to be in this field, even though I know that what I do really helps people. But all I can do is tell people that I'm sorry. I'm sorry that I don't have the solution for, for you to bring your children to a safe space where they can be housed. I see every single day, and it's really hard to just keep faith. And I love Kingston. It's, I've lived in the city for 12 years, and Kingston, though I've only been here for a year, it's, it's like being at home. I've never felt this way since I was really young. And I would love to continue living here, but I only make $40,000, $40,000 a year just for my day job. And then I have to supplement and work weekends and nights to pad. And if it's hard for me, I can't imagine how it is for people coming in who don't have a place to, to, to stay, who are out in the streets so cold at night. And a lot of our mental health and homeless people cannot get resources outside of Kingston because we are a hub. And so I really want to, I really support this and keeping our rents actually affordable because at this rate, we cannot, like, we cannot support Kingston as a whole. Kingston will be ridden with more homelessness. So, thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Tanya Garment.
Hi, Tanya Garment, 102 Worth Street. Our form-based code has inclusionary zoning requirements. In addressing the decades-long exclusionary zoning requirements that we've had that have done immense harm, we have a real lack of housing units because of our exclusionary zoning that we had for decades. In our new code, we've got inclusionary zoning. It is just one of many of the tools that Kingston has finally decided to implement in an institute. But the threshold of 80% AMI or less for the income of renters to be defined as affordable housing, and even higher than that for workforce housing, is a farce. If we're going to continue to have these thresholds, why are we having, what, why are we even calling it inclusionary zoning? Why do we have these requirements at all? In many cases, it ends up being rent that is higher than the landlords would charge anyway. The likelihood of them renting these affordable housing units that they're required to rent to people who make less than 80% AMI is very, that's not going to happen. They're not required to have a certain order of who they rent to. That, you are within the restrictions if you do 80%. And 80% is too high. We need to start with what we want. 50% is not unreasonable for 10% of housing that is seven units or more. It is just a small amount. It is just a small part. But if we're not going to have a real affordable housing requirement, then we should start talking about removing that part of the code. I don't believe that we should. I believe it's a strong statement of what our goals are, and that's very much what our form-based card, code, it's a large part of our form-based code, the intent of the code. And having those in it really says that we acknowledge that we've done harm for decades, and we need to repair, and we should have that in the code, but they should be real. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sarahhana Sharista.
Good evening. Thank you for holding this hearing. My name is Sarahhana Sharista. I am the New York State Assembly Member that represents District 103, which includes the City of Kingston. So as rents go up and wages stay stagnant and private developers fail to create the affordable housing at the scale we need, people are getting displaced at a rapid pace. Among those getting displaced are teachers, healthcare workers, construction workers, entry-level workers of various industries that face a shortage, senior citizens and veterans, and families who are choosing to raise their children elsewhere because that's where it's cheaper to live. To fully address the housing crisis, we need to stop LLCs and private equity firms from swooping in and owning and buying up basic needs like homes. And we must create a state social housing development authority, a public developer with a mission to build permanently affordable and high-quality homes, green homes using union labor. But in the meantime, we must do everything that is at our disposable, that is at our disposal to ensure people who live in Kingston can stay in Kingston, which at this moment includes lowering the threshold for affordable housing to 50% of AMI. 80% of AMI means a single-person household needs to earn $62,560. But the problem is 44% of Kingston households earn less than $50,000. Lowering the threshold to 50% would mean a single-person household needs to earn around $39,100. As for the concern that lowering the threshold will discourage new private development, our policies should be designed for people's needs, not for the logic of profits. The truth is, private development has faltered statewide despite the higher thresholds that are currently in place and despite the massive amounts of tax exemptions we've given them and will continue to give them through programs like 421P that the City of Kingston has opted into. So if developers cannot build the type of affordable units our community needs, then, then they don't deserve these benefits. We shouldn't be giving them tax exemptions. So I am here with the full acknowledgement that this is just one piece of the struggle, but I do support this resolution, and I hope you pass it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Assembly Member. Next speaker, please.
Aaron Chilwich.
Good evening. My name is Aaron Chilwich, and I live at 75 Madison Avenue in Ward 6. I also, by day, work in affordable housing development and, you know, subsidized housing development here in New York State. I appreciate that as policymakers facing an unprecedented housing crisis, there are a limited number of levers you can pull. Market rate rents have never been higher, and the need for affordable housing is overwhelming, as testimony here tonight makes evident. Inclusionary zoning is an attractive lever because it utilizes private development to create affordable housing. Unfortunately, and I take no pleasure in saying this, the evidence of research on other cities is clear. Inclusionary zoning might create a small number of affordable housing units, but it does so at the expense of all other renters for whom rents go up. That's right, inclusionary zoning can push market rents even higher because those, those inclusionary units have to be cross-subsidized within those buildings. And as Bartek said earlier, it can make development financially infeasible at all. My point tonight is not that Kingston should never consider strengthening its inclusionary zoning policy. Rather, the city should be sober about the trade-offs and move slowly. Kingston needs new housing to bring down costs overall and new income-restricted housing to meet the high demand for affordable housing. Unfortunately, it's still unclear if Kingston's market rents, high as they are, can support the development of new small-to-midsized buildings. I think Kingston should wait to see how the current policy plays out. Adopt or hire inclusionary zoning prematurely could effectively kill the supply growth the city has spent several years nurturing through its quite extraordinary zoning and housing initiatives. That would be a shame. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Joanne Steele. I support the proposal. I'm a landlord. I have a small three-family house in District 9. Almost, most of my tenants are from RUPCO. I decided to become a landlord and that I would do so in, in the manner of what would I want if I were going to rent an apartment? It's pretty simple. Nice apartment, a safe address, and affordable rent. Well, with RUPCO tenants, I can be assured of that. Those requirements, I, I, I hate to use the word hate, but I propose a law, a new law for the City of Kingston, and I call it jail time for slumlords. This would require that we beef up the building department, that they inspect and enforce the repairs necessary, timely, and that they come up with rules for how much time this and how much time that, and that the city then repair the apartment in the situation and/or the situation with union labor. And put it on, put the bill on their taxes. That's it. That's the law. It seems to be fairly simple to do. I'm surprised that it hasn't already been done. And highly urge jail time for slumlords start up as, as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Cam Miller.
Hi, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity to speak. My name's Cam Miller. I'm a For the Many member and a renter in Uptown Kingston at 89 Green Street. I'm asking you to support the resolution to lower the AMI range to 50% to 80% at the highest. The average annual wage of renters in Ulster County is well under the low, low end of the current range, which is 80% AMI for a one-bedroom and even a studio apartment. It's also less than half of the high end of the range, 120%. Clearly, the current definition of affordability for new construction is unsuitable and needs to be changed. I'm disappointed that our city government isn't making a good-faith effort to create truly affordable housing in the face of Kingston's housing crisis. Regarding the housing crisis, I'd like to note that there are enough units to house everyone in our community. The problem is that the growth of housing prices far exceeds the growth of wages. Thanks very much for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Rich Lanzarone.
Good evening. Rich Lanzarone, HVPoA. Someone needs to say it, but the emperor has no clothes. Fifty years of ever-increasing rent regulation in this state, including now Kingston, has been a complete failure and has resulted only in the highest rents anywhere in the world. And this amendment is only more of the same. The solution to lower housing costs, including affordable housing, is more housing. And all of the regulations, ETPA and Good Cause and inclusionary zoning do, all they do is discourage more building. Something needs to change. We need to see through the trees and see the forest. For example, the city has proposed a two, two, building 200, 200 units down by Lower Broadway. It's going to take five years because of a torturous path of public financing, low in, low-income housing tax credits, et cetera, et cetera. If Kingston was open for business, meaning it scrapped all of this regulation, including all of New York State, by the way, it would, developers would come and plunk down 50 million bucks, that's what it would take, to build 200 units. And 50 million, that sounds like a lot of money, but in the terms of the capital resources of New York and real estate, it's really a drop in the bucket. And it would create 200 affordable units. How would it do that? Because they would build market-rate units, and through the process called filtering, people will, would set, it would set off a chain of moves where people will move up into that market-rate housing, leaving behind less expensive housing. And that chain continues as those people move up, leaving behind less expensive housing. And so what it actually would create is 200 units that are affordable to people at all points in that chain of moves. The Common Council would do better if it wants to create housing, is use its Home Rule to exempt, by the way, to, it can exempt now by its Home Rule, any residential development of less than 200 units from Environmental Review, SECR, which is the weapon of choice that people who own housing use to keep more housing prevented from being built because they like high prices. So if you want less high prices, keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Jen Benson.
Hello, my name is Jen Benson, and I live at 24 West Chester Street. A note on SECR, it's really important to not only protect environment, the environment, but also communities and ensure that developments are not, the development or other types of proposals are not happening in a way that is harmful to things like drinking water supply. So just a quick aside on why we need to keep SECR around. I support decreasing the maximum rate for affordable housing to 50% of the AMI and also to decrease the maximum rate for workforce housing to 80% of the AMI. I am 33 years old. I have a master's degree from Bard College. I went to SUNY Geneseo in Western New York. I make $60,000 a year. I work for an environmental education nonprofit based here in the Hudson Valley. And that is my life's work. I do not have exceedingly high earning potential, and trying to find housing while living in Kingston has been exceedingly difficult. Most of the places, all of the places that I've lived have been with at least a minimum of four roommates, and in some cases revolving doors of roommates because even with many people in a household, it is still very, very difficult to afford to live here, not to mention Central Hudsonbells. I've knocked a lot of doors in this community and met people who are facing much more challenging circumstances than I. And this deduction would help people like me. But then there are all of the other people who have been living and working here for generations who fought to raise their families here. And then there are young people like me who want to raise families here, but we're facing an affordability crisis that is incredibly severe. We've had so many different hearings about how Kingston is trying to, to make a city that, well, if we want to make a city that is affordable and that is accessible to people. And I think that every unit, every unit at this point matters. Every family that we can keep in a house, every child that can grow up and have a steady place to live is important, and I ask you to fight for that. And this is one piece of a bigger picture, and we need, we need to keep developing comprehensive solutions. But please do not let the perfect be the enemy of the good. This would be a huge deal. And every family that we can keep in a home, every unit that we can keep more affordable is really important. And we don't, landlords want, in most cases, want to make money. There is a profit motive, and it is the responsibility of the regulators and of our government to protect the working people because at the end of the day, we are the backbone of the community.
Thank you. Okay. We've come to the end of the list. Is there anyone else that has not signed up that wishes to speak? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Patty Dines. I live at 180 Down Street. I am fortunate enough to have purchased my home in 2000. I am the political coordinator for IATSE Stagecraft for 100 miles, both sides of the Hudson. I'm a member of IATSE Local 52 Film and Television. I am also a vice president for the Hudson Valley Area Labor Federation. I'm here to speak for my brothers and sisters and kin in the union labor force in Kingston that have spoken in meetings about losing their apartment, needing to find a larger apartment because they have a child and they, their child is growing and needs their own room, and realizing that with a union wage, they can't afford to move. We need to do better for our citizenry. Don't let people struggle. We need a housing security workforce from the Common Council. We need to be meeting monthly as a community to come up with good ideas that will forward the housing security for all. We cannot look at housing as, one of our past speakers referred to as getting down to business. Housing is not to be a business. 200 apartments created by a developer is not going to create motion out of 200 affordable apartments because those apartments, those rents will go up. I implore you, do more. Fix this. This is why we elected you, because we trusted you.
30 seconds.
Also, I suggest you get a cue light so that you don't have to, to call out 30 seconds. It's $140 from Markitex, right up the road. I looked it up. You can do a, a, a yellow light and then a red light, and we'll know when to stop speaking. Thank you very much for your time, and please, please do better.
Thank you. Any, any more else? Please come forward.
I'm sorry, ma'am. You can only speak once on the floor, so we're going to call somebody in the back who hasn't spoken. Thank you. We could talk afterwards, but you can only, Michelle, can you? Thank you.
Thank you.
That should have been made clear, though, so I apologize for that. You can only speak once on the floor. Thank you.
Hi there, my name is Lee Bombasudo. I live in, at 85 O'Neill in Midtown. I moved here in 2020, like so many other people from Brooklyn. I moved to Kingston because of the activists and artists. I moved here because of the makers and small business owners, the people who now can't afford to be here. And wa, watching my friends who are lifelong Kingston residents deal with being unhoused and housing insecurity, the tremendously horrible conditions at Kingston Housing Authority, it is causing so much unrest, despair, and anxiety. And the mental health crisis that we can clearly see everywhere around us is in a large part being driven by unaffordable housing and housing insecurity. And so in order to keep people wanting to be here, and we're hearing about the development that won't want to come here, nobody will want to come here if the city is not supporting the lifelong Kingston residents who have made this city a great place to be. That's why we want to be here. And so I fully support this resolution lowering the AMI so that our friends, our community, the people who make this city what it is, can afford to stay here, live here, and build here. Thank you so much for creating this space.
Thank you. One more speaker in the back? Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Greta Moseson. I'm a For the Many member, and I live in Sawgerties, but I canvass in Kingston, and I have friends and family who are renters in Kingston. I'm urging you to support the resolution to amend the affordability range from 80% for affordable housing and 120 AMI to 50% and 80%, respectively. The average salary of a renter in Kingston is 46.5K. This is less than half of what somebody would need to make in order to afford a one-bedroom apartment that's considered affordable by any logical measure that's not affordable. We're talking about where people live, where they rest, and where they raise their families. The city has an obligation to its citizens that's failing to meet one of the, on one of the absolute most important fronts, and the housing needs of the community need to be met. As mentioned by others tonight, Kingston's a desirable place to live. People are going to continue to move here and live here. Developers will continue to build here. But beyond these concerns, again, affordable housing is a bare minimum, and the city's not meeting it, so I support the amendment. Thank you.
Thank you. Please come forward. Thank you.
Hi, my name is MK Scully. I live at 116 Second Street in Connolly, and thank you for letting me sneak up here. I came from work. I just want to add one more voice to the chorus that I support this measure. It's really just a matter of being realistic about what affordable is, and affordable is not, you know, one person making $62,000 a year. I work full-time. I work two jobs, spring, summer, fall. I'm a wedding DJ. It's my side hustle. I have to do it. And I pulled in, I think, $45,000 last year. So just, let's just be realistic. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, it's 6:47, and I'm closing, calling the public hearing to an end. Thank you.